Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 17th work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have a relatively long agenda this evening, so we will do our best to move through it expeditiously. First, I'd like to call Chief Hoppus up if you wouldn't mind coming to join us.
Lucky guy.
First item on our agenda is EMS billing rate review and recommendation. And before we start, I just wanted to note, Mr. Spies made us aware that this evening there is a free veterans dinner available at Golden Corral.
Correct.
All evening.
Until nine o'clock.
Until nine o'clock. So if you're watching at home and you finish watching with us around 7:30 PM, please go enjoy a free meal if you're a veteran at Golden Corral in Salisbury.
No identifications required for this. Please be honest, please.
Veterans and spouses and family members. Excellent. Thank you. Chief Hoppus.
Well, good evening, and thanks for entertaining this request for reviewing and recommending changes in our EMS billing rates. This periodically happens from time to time. The last time we were before council with a recommendation to change our EMS billing rates was in February of 2012, so a little over two and a half years ago was the last time we did a rate review. Our EMS billing company, as part of their service to us, generally annually provides us with a recommendation on changing our EMS rates in all the categories that are listed in the information provided to council, in what they believe is reasonable customary based on their experience, as well as any changes into Medicare and Medicaid laws that will allow us to bill at either a higher or lower rate depending on the fluctuation and changes. So what's before council tonight is a recommendation that the department is making to increase our EMS billable rates in various areas as outlined, and if council wants, I can go through them one by one, or we can have a discussion on the efficacy of the request.
Well, first of all, my question, and I would like to get through them one by one.
Okay.
But my first question is, what is our current success rate with collection?
Last, in 2013, it was at 46% collections. Now, that was part of, part of that was a transition from the old billing company into the new. The previous billing company we had was severely underperforming, so a lot of that was carryover of plus 120, 180 day receivables for that. So we anticipate our return rate should be somewhere in the 60% rate, and that's what we're working to, and we're trying to get our billing company to that end. The other portion of the reason why it's so low is, as we transitioned to the new billing company, what we didn't know was that we needed to alter the way that we collected information as an EMS provider, as it relates to having certain responsible party signatures, having medical necessity statements made to each of the patients that we transport to allow them to determine whether or not they needed our services based on what the medical assessment was, and then we could give them the option to make sure that they understood whether the treatment was necessary. So there's a lot of growth that's happened over the last 18 months or so for the department as well, but we hope and always continue to try to improve the return rate, but as I last measured it, which was in 13, that it was 46%.
Okay. We have nothing from then to now to indicate whether or not that trend is improving?
I don't have it available to me tonight, but I can certainly, I can certainly find that out.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think it would be useful to go through this line by line, but I'll move into alternative suggestions.
Okay.
Everybody want to hear it?
Yep.
All right, so the information that provided to council begins with the cover memo. What I'd like to do, however, is move past my cover memorandum into the first page of the EMS, City of Salisbury EMS Rate Survey for 2014, provided by LifeQuest, which is part of the attachment. The very first page of that, if you'll look in one of the columns to the right, it's highlighted in red. I don't know if you have a color copy of this or not, but it's highlighted for sure where it demonstrates the City of Salisbury EMS's level of service. It shows our current billable rates, and as they compare to other EMS functions across the country, and then the billing company was kind enough to average that out, and then not only did they average out the six other companies that they had compared us to, they also averaged out what their total database of billable companies was to give, to give council an idea of what the average rates were currently being billed for across the United States. And they, they service a good deal of the United States, or primarily a Midwest company. They have a few of the East Coast, we're one of their East Coast customers. They also have some of the West Coast customers. So they have a pretty good database in which to choose from and make recommendations, but what they, what they provide for us as a service is a, is a assessment based on similar and like performing companies to the City of Salisbury, which is how they make their recommendation to us. As you can tell, in some cases, we are, in most cases, we are under billing or undercharging for our services based on those reasonable and like companies, and even well underperforming the average. Page two of their, of their recommendation really just goes into the detail of what their rate recommendations are. Mr. Heath.
Yeah, one quick question. The jurisdictions that are listed here, are they similar to ours in terms of geographic spread, economic area? What are the, what's the criteria that, why did they choose those?
Yeah, and I'd like to be able to answer that with exactness, but I can't. But what I can say is, based on my conversations with them, it's, it's department demographic makeup and the service provision by each of the departments or entities.
Okay.
As it relates to the service areas, I can't, I can answer, I can certainly ask that question.
Okay. That would be interesting to see.
I too have a question regarding this in the charts. In the pink column, yours is red, mine is pink.
Yes, okay.
We have several things down toward the bottom in our column that are no specific rate provided, whereas some departments do. Oxygen, spinal immobilization, BLS on scene care, ALS on scene care, resident and non-resident. Is there a reason why we do not have a specific rate for those items?
I can't answer that with exactness, but what I can say is, in 2012, those items were added as a recommendation to do, and it's my understanding, based on the fact that it's still at zero, that council had decided to not approve those at that time.
Okay. And I have a second question, too. When, this is something that a lot of people are a little confused about with Medicare transportation, is whether or not the transportation is warranted under Medicare rules, and I would really encourage everybody to look up on their Medicare charts and look in the internet to find out what is covered. When it is not covered, there's supposed to be something called an advanced beneficiary notice of non-coverage, and does your, does your, do your ambulance people give people one of those? It's a requirement, and I'm hoping that it's, the answer is yes.
I, I think the answer is yes, but I think the verbiage is a little different. You called it, I can't repeat what you said, but.
Advanced beneficiary notice of non-coverage. It's an ABM.
Yeah, and what we're providing to each service, each customer is, or each citizen that we serve is, is a notice of a medical necessity, which kind of is the same thing where, in the assessment of the medical providers that are there, they determine whether, in their professional opinion, the call or the transport is warranted based on the presented facts of the case, or the patient's signed symptoms and treatment priorities, and if in their, if then the provider's determination that it's not medically necessary, then they notify the patient, have the patient sign a form that says, yes, I understand, still wish transport.
Indeed, that's what this calls for as well.
Yep.
So long as we do that, then, you know, the onus is off of the city at that point.
Correct.
And the responsibility falls to the folks who receive the care. So I encourage folks out there to be sure that you're getting what you're looking for when you're.
And we do, too, but at the end of the day, our providers are making that recommendation on scene to the patient. Given the patient's duress at the time, most of the time, they say, I still want to go to the hospital, and we're happy to do that. We just have to make sure that they're, understand their rights and what the possibility for having the call paid for is.
And there may, excuse me, after the event, there may be varying degrees of discussion about whether or not it was medically necessary, and those may fall to the attending physician for the individual, who's a regular physician, or the ER physician, da-da-da-da-da. And if the people will have to work with them to get that, like a letter of necessity from them to take care of the Medicare.
That's, that's exactly correct, and oftentimes, they call us as well, and we work with them to the best of our ability to make sure that if there is a case where the patient, I'll make up a patient, if a patient was presenting with certain signs and symptoms, and it probably wasn't medically necessary for them to be transported by ambulance, our providers would tell them that, or in the case that most likely happens is, they need to be transported, they get transported, but our, our providers are to make sure that they document within the patient care report the reason for medical necessity for transport, and we make sure that we're making sure we're holding up our end of the bargain so that there's a high likelihood that the patients, insurance companies do pay for it. But we work with the patients often to make sure that they, most time after the fact, whether or not that was medically necessary or not, and we're working through that as best we can with the customers.
As our, as our population ages, we're going to see more and more of that, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I, just on that note, I know of one case where they presented not being able to breathe without significant pain, got to the hospital, it turned out to be muscle spasms from a pull, and they said, oh, the ambulance wasn't necessary, it was just a muscle pull. Well, that's not my call to make, that's not your call to make.
No, no, that's right.
Patient can't breathe, you take them to the hospital in the ambulance. It ended, it ended up getting paid, but it was a big fight.
Yeah, you have to challenge it at that point, because the difference is, is the hospital and the, and the clinical environment can make that final and best practice determination while the EMS providers may not, based on what's presented to them.
Correct. Your comment a few minutes ago about the charges not being added on, and the assumption that that was something a decision council made, I don't recall that at all.
The reason why I made that assumption is that my letter of recommendation had those charges on it, but it didn't carry through to the final resolution as far as, as far as I know, or we would be charging for it in my best guess, but that's just an assumption on my part.
Okay. So are we going to add them now, or do you need action by us to do it? That's what I'm.
Well, part of tonight's, part of tonight's presentation is to have that discussion. In the resolution that I provided to council, I've made the recommendation to add that, which will take us from not doing it today to doing it after the resolution is passed. And I recognize that this is a work session, and we'll have to go before legislative session to have that happen.
Right. So this is now, will now be another item that we'll need to review each year at budget time to set the fees for?
Yeah, the.
Which don't necessarily line up with changes in Medicare fees that.
Yeah, and generally speaking, to do it annually is probably very aggressive. As I said, this has, it's been two and a half years since we did it last. About every two years is probably the reasonable, and not looking like we're out just to maximize the dollar, but, because we're really just trying to do what's reasonable customary and not, not necessarily being in the profit tiering business.
So what's going to be the trigger that makes us remember to go and do that?
That's what we pay our billing company for. Our billing company provides that service to us. They provide me and the finance department with, with this very recommendation that you see here before you. They provide that to us and say, just for your consideration, here's what you might want to consider.
Right. But if three years down the road, four years down the road, we change billing companies and that company doesn't do it, as was the case before we got this billing company, it hadn't been done in a long time, what's our trigger to make us do this?
You're generally dependent then on your fire chief or your finance director to, to do that. As it relates to the requests before you tonight, it really started with the finance director doing rate reviews for the entire city, at which point triggered the fire chief to go, hey, wait a minute, and I'd already had this, have been received from the billing company, so it's kind of like a multiple tiered event. You have multiple department heads looking at it, once the finance director, the fire chief is doing it. So there are, but there is no, without the billing company doing it as part of their service on our end, it's just what we're doing internally as a department to analyze those on a regular basis.
I guess my suggestion would be then that it is made a part of the budget process to review that. That may not mean that you're doing changes every year, but it's a trigger to make you look at it each year and see, okay, we just did it last year, we don't need to do it this year. Oh, wait, it's been two years, it's been three years, we haven't done it, so maybe we need to ask for an update if we hadn't automatically gotten one.
We put a tickler in our, in our system.
Yeah, basically, a trigger of some sort, because if it's not there, and personnel changes and things happen, it doesn't happen.
Agreed.
The other question that I had, it's something that's in here that has been discussed for quite a while, and that's in town, out of town, resident, non-resident billing differences, and they're pretty significant. The jumps are significant from current to the recommended number. And then there's an additional increase for non-resident. Now, is that non-resident just within the city limits, or non-resident outside your fire district? How are you going to know?
It is, this is my opinion, it's based on whether or not they are residents of the municipal limits of the City of Salisbury.
The person being served, or?
Yeah, the patient.
The patient?
The patient.
Okay.
Right.
Not the location of?
That's correct. It's the person being served. And then what that, what that does a couple of things, and it's not intended to be punitive towards the residents of the county that we serve, but it does capture visitors to our community from outside of the jurisdiction, outside the state even. It allows us to, to capture that as well.
And your, this recommendation came from the billing company, so this is something that other jurisdictions are doing?
Yes. And as we get to, I think on the next page, what you'll see is, so on the next page would be the recommended rates. It says, on the third, fourth line, it says, "Non-resident rates are reimbursed by virtually all private insurance companies." So we're leaving, we're leaving that opportunity on the table if we don't do that.
But probably not Medicare. They probably won't pay a different rate for resident versus non-resident.
That is correct. And Medicare, according to the billing company, makes up about, Medicare and Medicaid make up about 52% of our total patients that we're serving.
Now, is that going to be determined by the billing company and where they're sending the bill? Or by the EMS?
It'd be, it'll be both. It'll be both. We'll, we have a, as a part of the patient care report, we have a section on there that talks about in or out, in the City of Salisbury, out of the City of Salisbury. So our providers will actually be able to select that first, and then, then there'll be some address verifications by the billing company to make sure that that is correct.
I'm just, my, my big concern with that would be with a student who does have a physical address here, is living here for at least a period of time, yet their bills may be sent to New Jersey or New York, Baltimore, or wherever, and may trigger an out of town rate when it's really in.
But it's an interesting, it's an interesting dilemma that we would have to allow the patient then to challenge that, and I'm hoping they would through the billing company, and then all of that recommendation could be made to switch that down.
Chief, question on, on the same vein. How is mutual aid built?
It would be built the same way.
So if, so it would be out of town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that practiced elsewhere that any, that either you're aware of, or you're aware of?
I'm not aware.
I'm not sure, but I think.
I think, I think an argument can be made for.
We need to, we need to, personally, I think we need to look at that, because it works, it works both ways.
Yes, it does. So the question would be, yeah, again, I think an argument could be made that regardless, you could justify a higher charge for providing service to a non-resident. That said, I wonder if anything in our mutual aid agreements would prevent us from differentiating?
Our mutual aid agreements, the answer in my, my opinion is no, it doesn't, it doesn't cover it.
Okay.
As it relates to, and this is a general, this is a general statement, not a specific statement as it relates to EMS. Generally, the mutual aid agreement is by far tilted towards the fire service. Would you agree, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr.?, don't help me. Mr. Heath, thank you.
Yes.
I'm having a senior moment, sorry. Generally, highly slanted towards the fire service, of which there is no financial remuneration on either end.
Okay.
As it relates to provision of EMS, as an enterprise, I'm, I'm going to go on a limb that all fire departments in the county charge for EMS services. That may not be true, but I'm pretty sure it is.
I think, I think I agree with you, but I just, I'm struggling with the.
Mutual aid particularly, because it's within the county. The county's giving money to each one of them, we're paying county taxes, and then if I'm in, just over the line in Fruitland, let's say I go to Fruitland Walmart, and I need services from Fruitland, I mean, if we do this, they're going to do this. So I think that's to be expected.
Yeah.
And then they need services, or someone who lives in Fruitland has to come into Salisbury to work, and they're being serviced, and they get an extra $75 charge or $100 charge. Mr. Till, would you like to weigh in on the legality of that, or what might, what that might be?
I wasn't asked to look up any of this ahead of time. I mean, I haven't, didn't even have any input in the resolution, but I think that it is, you can charge higher rates. I mean, it's done entrance fees in state parks, all kinds of things, you know, for people who are taxpayers get a break. We might want to structure it a little differently if it's going to cause problems with Medicare or Medicaid. We might want to have a, a single rate that we bill and then give a discount on the backside to taxpayers in the City of Salisbury, you know, but I can certainly look into that.
I know.
That, that way, we wouldn't have the problem of, you know, in other words, Medicare, you know, we wouldn't have a problem with different rate structures based on, it would almost be a rate structure based on membership, like, you know, you're, you're part of my HMO, so you get a lower rate than.
One of the things that you usually have to do is have the same rate across the board, whether it's private insurance, Medicare, cash payment, and if you start changing that up, and sometimes they will, like doctors will discount a cash patient.
Yeah, right.
But if you start saying upfront, the rates are different, then Medicare gets really upset, and that's what I'm, I, I think the in-town, out-of-town, obviously, if other places are doing it, they've either not caught on yet, or it's, it's working with them, but I'm thinking about with mutual aid situations particularly that.
Well, what if it only applies to private, to those who are paying with private insurance or, or cash, you know, non-Medicare, so that, you know, you're not having a government-funded program reimbursing the city at a higher rate than a private insurer for a resident? So essentially, taking the Medicare and Medicaid patients out of the mix of being subject to a resident, non-resident determination.
Yeah.
Maybe we're talking, you know, I realize we're talking about now creating multiple categories.
Yeah.
But most of this is automated.
Right. I think we do something different for people who don't have any insurance anyway. We work out payment plans, or if they don't have any ability to pay, we had a form that we had them fill out to be, to get verified that they were below a certain level and couldn't pay it, and then it was basically written off. So I'm not so much worried about that. I guess the rest of them are going to some kind of insurance. I do have concerns about somebody who gets hit with that cost, who has an ability to pay, but is going to have to pay cash over time, you know, they're determined to have an ability to pay, but they have to pay that extra money when they're already paying their taxes. And I don't know if that's a case by case, I don't know how common that is, I don't know how we, I'm not sure how we deal with that.
Yes, you specifically talk about cash payment plans?
Right. I mean, for most people, they're not going to notice this. It's going to get billed to Medicare, it's going to get billed to their insurance, it's going to get billed to somebody else. They'll get a statement that they won't look at, or, or they might, and then it, you know, goes in a pile. And they'll, unless they have to pay a portion of it, and that's generally, you pay a flat $50 or whatever, it doesn't matter if it's $100 or $300, you pay $50 if you take a ride in an ambulance. So I don't think that most people will notice. I think the people that will notice are the Medicare patients who have a 20%, or insurance patients who have a percentage copay that might be a little bit higher, and the people who don't have any insurance are really going to see that difference. And, you know, they're, they make enough money to, too much money to qualify, to not, they don't qualify for, have any written off, but they, we'll give them a payment plan, but now they're paying an extra $100 that, because they happen to be in this town or that town.
Okay, so Chief, what I'd like to see is, can we bring this back, and can you investigate in the meantime further the mutual aid agreements and how they would affect this, and whether or not, under the terms of those mutual aid agreements, we can enter into it, and then, secondly, whether or not it's advisable, given that we may end up in a situation where everybody's charging more for non-residents and charging less for residents? And can we also investigate in the meantime the legality of, or the legality and advisability of charging a, a different rate to Medicare, Medicaid, and what we're doing about the cash payment and payment plans?
The answer to the question about the Medicare/Medicaid legality is you can't. There's, they have a set fee schedule, and that's the fee schedule. So all of this applies to only private pay, or private pay or private carrier.
Got it. Okay, well, that resolves that issue. But I'd like to, I'd like us to investigate the, you know, one, again, legality, and two, advisability of the, the relationship between this and our mutual aid agreements, and come back to next, next work session that you're ready, even if that's in two weeks, if you're ready, or more, if, if the administration wants more time than that. Is council okay with that?
Would the council want me to move forward with the rest of the information, or do you just want me to come back with the answer to those questions before we move on?
You want to cover financial impact?
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of.
I'm okay with you covering financial impact, but we're definitely going to need to bring this back.
Okay.
But yeah, let's cover financial impact.
Yeah, financial impact, there is a, there's a, the billing company attempted to use historical data to put together this financial impact model, but what I can say is, is that there's a, there's a, there's a lot underrepresented instances here that we probably could, given enough time and effort, to put together the data to find out what the true and final is. For example, we could go and review a, a month or six months of spinal mobilization and then carry that forward. We could go on oxygen, we could do all of that, it just would take a very monumental effort to do, which is why they, they didn't, they didn't go through that effort, but what they did was they just measured what they knew, and what they knew was the information that's provided. So my, my guess would be that if we were to go forth and do that assessment, that that number would be much higher based on the information provided to, to do my, to do oxygen, spinal mobilization, and all of the refusals, which is part of that, the last thing, the things that were not, what, in my opinion, some of the most important things are the things we're not currently charging for. One of the issues is that the BLS on scene and the ALS on scene care are, are areas where we respond to an emergency, or at least a reported emergency, provide some level of care, only to have the patient refuse to be transported. And so, and those get billed at zero because we don't have that going forward.
Right, that's an issue.
It's a huge issue. We have a lot of refusals of treatment, which is a good thing, that means our, our folks aren't needing the assistance, but it's also meaning that we're, we're genuinely not available for a real call for service, we're providing a service that we're, that we're not getting reimbursed for. So anyway, I, I just wanted to bring council's attention to that, and I think that those, those bottom five issues, if we were to dig in, would significantly raise the financial impact and budget increase that we could look for, so.
Chief, also, I'm sorry. I would assume that they use the current collection rate from the, what the existing data they had, not the one they quoted you in terms of what your expectations are going forward.
Yeah, and what they did, they did that, but if you'll look at the very bottom of that page, they calculated a 20% margin of error, which is huge. So that gets us up to the 60%, if I, if I did my math correctly. You know, what I, what I did in 13 was 46%, and the 20% margin of error to the plus side would be 66% if I did that right.
Hope it doesn't go south.
Yeah, you don't want to go the other way for sure.
Yeah, because I was kind of bothered.
Being a single digits.
I was kind of puzzled by that 40%. Now, is that?
46%. Got to get all credit.
I think in that memo, it says, in the very first page of your memo, I believe it said 40%.
Nothing on page one.
Yeah, it does say that.
Page two, I'm sorry.
It's page two.
Forty percent collection rate. Now, is that our net after they've taken their fees?
Yes.
Or they're only collecting forty percent of what we're, what they're...
No, that's the net.
Okay.
It's, it's low, it's low, it's too low.
That's not uncommon, though.
No.
Now, is that, are they including figures from the previous billing company that wasn't billing?
Yes. They, they have, they have to, 'cause it's, it's part of the, this may not be the correct, the correct verbiage, but it's part of the bad debt that's laying out there, that's months and months and months uncollectible, so it, it really, it really skews that number tremendously.
Okay, so that explains the, thank you.
You know, just from a fiscal policy standpoint, I mean, this seems like, like taking the right approach, I think, especially providing, or, you know, having a charge for that refusal to transport, that on-scene care, and, and charging for that service being provided, rather than the taxpayers subsidizing those services. I mean, this, this seems like a very good direction to head, I, I believe, that, again, not being a firefighter or emergency medical technician, but I, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, I'm very supportive of that, so, I think, once we, once we address the issues that we discussed a moment ago, I think we'll be in a better place. So, at your leisure, when you're ready, I think counsel is ready to continue the conversation, we just need to address those few issues.
Sure, it's no problem to do that, my goal would be to do it sooner than later, because budget, budget season's approaching, so, we ought to be able to...
I, I made that assumption, I just wanted to give the administration the, the leeway to take as much time as you need.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Obolos? Okay, it sounds like we have consensus to bring this back with those amendments, adjustments, and recommendations?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief, I'm gonna send you a PDF of the AVN CMS manual, just make sure squared away with what, with what they call for.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think you probably have everything already.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Chief.
Forgive me, everyone, for coughing into the microphone all night long, I think it's gonna continue to be like that.
Is that what?
Right. Okay, next item on our agenda is the Main Street Master Plan, so I'll invite Ms. Pollak and Mr. Mouser, the AMT team, to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did we start with some introductions?
Oh, you have a bunch here?
Yeah.
You're okay?
Okay, I'll introduce our team, starting at the far right is Paul Mouser, who's the Public Works Project Engineer, and then our AMT consultants, we have Kathy Walsh, who's the Project Manager, and Steve Torgerson. So, just to give you a very, very brief background, 'cause I'm gonna turn it over to AMT, they recently submitted the thirty-five percent design of the Main Street Master Plan project, they are designing all phases right now, so we'll talk about all phases in this presentation. On October sixteenth, we had a joint committee meeting between the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee, Central City District Commission, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, so we received feedback from those three committees at a, at a sort of a work session with them, and it is also in AMT's scope to present to counsel and get your feedback. They'll go over the schedule going forward, but you'll also hear from them again closer to when design is nearing completion at about ninety percent.
I believe we also have representatives of some of those committees in the room.
Yes, that's correct, yes, thank you. So, they have about a fifteen-minute presentation, we try to keep it brief so we could leave plenty of time for questions, so I'll turn it over to you, Kathy. Is it working, or...
When all else fails, unplug it.
Okay, so, I'll begin, thank you for having us here to present this project, as Amanda mentioned, this is Main Street Improvement. And so, we're gonna be developing design plans right through to advertisement stage, full hundred percent construction plan. What we're doing is taking the Main Street Master Plan, and using the components that were approved and studied in that project, and incorporating those into our project for the construction and the design reconstruction of all of Main Street. So, basically, Main Street's gonna be reconstructed from Mill Street to US Route thirteen, and it will be full reconstruction from face of building to face of building, and that includes improvements at the intersection of Division Street. And the intent of this project was to revitalize that old historic area by providing more safe corridor for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles, and providing a little bit more access to the businesses adjacent to Main Street by adding some on-street parking. So, as part of a complete street design, and looking at some of the components that are beside, behind the curb line into the buildings, the first thing we would have is what we're including to be an average of seven-foot wide sidewalks, and that also, in, in addition to the seven feet, we have a four-foot buffer between the sidewalk and the curb, that's also a walkable surface. The sidewalks, the sidewalk ramps, and all the crosswalks will be designed to meet current ADA standards and criteria. The streetscape will also have street trees and improved lighting for safety along Main Street, and will be including some hardscape features, some benches, recycled bins, and bike racks, and because there's on-street parking, there's a, kind of a zone between the curb and the trees for step-out. We are also providing traffic calming along Main Street, and those components include some of the bumpouts or curb extensions, which help pinch the street and slow people down, as well as some more visible and well-marked crosswalks, so cars can see pedestrians at the crosswalks, and those will be placed at common crossing places in safe locations. We'll have a bike lane, but it will be part of a shared lane on the roadway, and will be marked and signed with sharrows, that'll be continuous through the full length of Main Street. And then, one of the big concerns was parking spaces, so we have been able to increase parking from sixty-five spaces to eighty-two spaces, this will also include some consolidated parking meters at different points along the corridor. And we are keeping the parking bays at twenty-four feet in length, so, most of the corridor in Division Street, they'll be eight feet wide, but on West Main Street, because of some reduced corridor issues, they are seven feet wide. And West Main Street is only one lane, one-direction roadway. And Steve will get into the trees.
So, this is a breakdown of the street trees that are existing along Main Street currently, and it shows the number of trees total, the number that we are proposing to remove, and the number that we are proposing to plant. And I wanted to bring up that on West Main Street, a number of the trees, a total of twenty-seven trees to be removed, many of them are the smaller accent trees, they are understory trees, some of them are actually in decline or almost dead, and they're really not often the best street tree in the world. And so, just so as everybody's keeping in mind the total number of trees to be removed, please keep in mind that some of them sit in that realm. Also, along Division Street, there is a number of hazard or invasive species that you have, specifically the Bradford pear, and we are proposing that those be removed, so that we don't have any future hits on top of heads, or hits on top of cars, and also removing that invasive species. So, I'm going to walk everybody through the corridor, starting on West Main Street, and we have simplified this from some of our other presentations to make sure that we kind of sit within that fifteen-minute limit. So, West Main Street is a one-way street going towards Division Street, at least that's what's proposed. Right now, it is actually a one-way street that goes away from Division Street, and so, the one-way will, will flip. And, we've accommodated a fifteen-foot wide roadway, there's seven-foot wide parking, and as Kathy mentioned, the seven-foot wide parking, it's, because we have that fifteen-foot roadway, we are allowed to kind of have situations where larger cars can slop out a little bit into the road. But ultimately, the rationale behind keeping it the way that it is, is so that we can have sufficient space for pedestrians, for outdoor eatery opportunities, and to help keep this street pedestrian-friendly on West Main. And just so everyone is also knows that this will be a street, it will look like a street, but there will be lots of pedestrian opportunities, so that it is safe. So, here's a typical cross-section, as we zoom in a little bit, and you can see some of the bumpouts that help to narrow the street a little bit, that is being done for safety reasons, so that as the street narrows, cars also slow down. It also provides additional opportunity for planting, and it provides opportunities for outdoor eatery spaces, and that is what is shown, I can actually use this arrow maybe, that is shown here, and here. In addition to that, we are proposing to do some elevated tables in these locations to help slow down the traffic, to make sure that as cars move through this corridor, the pedestrians are safe. This is Division Street, and the, what we're currently calling the Civic Square, or the Courthouse Square, and you'll notice that there are street trees that are being proposed on both sides of Division Street, and we also have this new square. We might have a new square, if I can point to it. We'll try the red arrow now.
Could I interrupt you for a second as well?
Yes, sir.
You just mentioned elevated tables, and I think that the public might be a little confused about what you mean when you say elevated tables, okay? How is a table gonna make a difference?
So, an elevated table is, in, in layman terms, it's a speed bump, but it's a very large speed bump, so we're not talking about the little skinny twelve-inch speed bump that's twelve inches tall, that when you actually drive over it, you lose your muffler and the under part of your car. That speed table really is intended to be this large table, it raises up very gently, six inches, and then it's flat across the top, and then it drops the six inches. And the benefit that, of that is ultimately that we can really highlight that intersection, so that as pedestrians move through the space, the cars are aware that there's going to be a change in front of them, and they're alerted to that.
And it's, it's raised throughout the full intersection, not just at the crosswalk?
That's correct.
And there are no chairs involved with this to kind of...
No.
Right.
And it's safer for emergency response as well?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question, are these trees all the proposed planted trees? I'm assuming that old homes are trees?
Yes.
Are the proposed trees, or existing, or a little bit of both?
They are the proposed trees. In this circumstance, there are trees here, and you can see them lightly in green, these are existing trees that are in the Civic Square space, and those are to remain. However, there are a number of trees in this space that are the Bradford pears that are to be removed.
Perhaps you could provide us with a list of what the tree varieties, or the specimens are gonna be?
Yes, we can do that. We also went through, and we assessed all of the existing trees with the city forester, and we looked at benefits and constraints of saving those trees. And, there are a number of complications that we have associated with saving those trees, including the fact that the root buttress of the trees is so much higher than the existing grade currently is. And so, as construction happens, as curb is being removed, and then replaced, we, we looked at how we would be able to preserve those existing trees, and it becomes extremely complex, and in some cases, a little bit of a safety hazard, where we end up with a curb that now is, instead of six inches tall, it might have to be twelve inches tall. And actually, on West Main Street, that curb may end up having to be twenty-four inches tall, in which to preserve those trees. And so, it became a very complex situation, and one that we presented as an option, but one with many complications.
And Amanda, we're going to be doing some infra, infrastructure, deep digging there, so some of the trees coming out is, is a result of that.
Yes, absolutely, we'll be replacing the water main, most of the sanitary sewer, and the storm drains along the length of the street, so that's also damaging to the, to the existing root structure of the trees.
And we'll be changing the type of trees that, that won't do that in the future.
Yes, yes, and we're not gonna get into it in great detail today, but we're putting a lot of planning into how these trees will survive, and the, basically, the, the subbase that they need to be able to thrive as street trees.
Good choice. Sorry to interrupt, thank you.
No, it's fine. These are just a few images of how that Civic Square can appear, its purpose and need, opportunities for a little bit of water, but not so much that it's a maintenance nightmare, but where people could come and splash through it in the summer, opportunities for concerts, opportunities for sitting, really a flexible space that can be used for lots of different activities. So, this is a typical section of East Main, going from Division out to the end of the project, and here we have twelve-foot wide lanes with the sharro, once again, for bicycles, an opportunity for eateries once again, or green spaces, and just to let everyone know that in some circumstances, this is actually mirrored, so it's not just on one side, and actually, in some circumstances, the outdoor eatery or the green space happens on both sides of the street. And that's specifically done, so that once again, we are pinching the road down to help slow traffic down, as a traffic calming situation. And this is a planned view, fairly typical, with opportunities and spaces. Here is the step-out zone slash the, the green zone where the trees will be planted, but there's lots of opportunities here to put site furnishings, to put bicycle racks, to make sure that they're spaced out evenly across the entire streetscape, so that people that are riding their bikes can hop off, lock their bike up, and go to whatever business that they want to go to. And this is our design schedule, we have sixty-five percent design that is due in January, ninety-five percent design due in April, and then, the project will be advertised in July, with actual construction starting in the fall of two thousand and fifteen. And I'm sure there are lots of questions.
You're right about that. Questions and comments? My list is incredibly long, so if we wanna start somewhere else, we can?
I just have a couple.
Ms. Mitchell?
One comment was, the comptroller's not downtown anymore, I saw that in a couple of slides. That's the courthouse, I guess, is where you were, I was trying to orient myself, but, you mentioned the parking, adding additional parking spaces, did you, did you accomplish that by reducing the size of the parking spaces?
No, we didn't. The West Main Street, as you know, which is a lot of plaza area right now, has very few parking spaces, so by reducing some of the bumpout areas and the planting areas, we were able to add in a fair amount of parking spaces. Plus, on the east end, we were able to consolidate some of the bumpouts, even though they are still providing storm runner management, they're still providing some areas where there's eateries and things. We could put the, put the puzzle together, kind of, where we could accommodate, almost, I think we have the same amount, or a few more spaces on the east end as well. And then Division Street remains almost the same, that hasn't changed very much.
And note there is that our city standard is eight-foot by twenty-four-foot parking space, and that's what we'll be using for East Main Street and Division Street as well.
Is that what they are now?
Actually, some are smaller than that now, they're twenty-two, and some are...
I watch people try to parallel park there all the time, and I got really worried when it looked like you had a lot of compact cars that barely fit in there.
Right now, right now, they're twenty-two feet, so we are actually, the, the city standard is, is eight by twenty-four.
The other thing with the planning for the eateries and, and some of that, we have a couple that already have that, one in particular in the east end that has put significant investment into that. How is that going to work? I mean, obviously, we still wanna replace the sidewalk under that, and not leave one section with old sidewalk, but what's the plan, or is there one yet for that? How's that gonna work?
We, we're ma, throughout construction, we'll definitely maintain access to all businesses and all... Throughout construction, we'll definitely maintain access to all businesses at all times. There won't be parking on both sides at all times, but there should be some on-street parking on and off throughout construction, or at least on one side through all of the phase of construction. Yeah, that sidewalk will be torn up. I don't know that we can maintain outside tables during that time. We can maintain access to the front door, so that's something we'll have to discuss and see how we can work out, or if we can work it out to have the construction during more of the downtime or the months where maybe they're not even outside.
Can I address that in one of my later questions as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe I know the business you're referring to, but I believe that we will have a landscape bump out there as well, existing as was proposed.
Okay, so, I mean, it will continue eventually. It's just, it'll be in the interim, there may be some disruption, but that was...
Correct.
Yeah, it will continue, it's in space, and as they pull their permit to actually be out on the public realm, for lack of a better word, there will be standards that we will set up in the design set so that we have a consistent streetscape throughout. And we'll have to discuss how that standard fits in, whether the separation between the actual road and the eatery of whether it's some type of a metal structure, whether it's a skinny planter or something like that. We'll have to discuss that a little bit more and flesh that out in the design process.
Mr. Spies, investigate.
I'm good. I'm sure you'll cover it. I'm waiting for you to just hammer it off.
Well...
I'm sorry, do you have the...
Oh, yeah. Okay. This is in no particular order, other than let me start by saying, this is an exciting project. Super excited to have AMT on board. I wanna thank Paul and Amanda and Mike for everything you and your team are doing on this. And I wanna thank the three committees of the city that have been brought in, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee, and the CCDC, the Central City District Commission, for their participation. So, some of these are questions and some of these are comments. Let me also provide the overarching comment that this is an eight, eight and a half million-dollar project. We've got to get it right. We have a responsibility to do this absolutely right. Anytime a municipality is going to spend eight million dollars on an infrastructure project, it better be done perfectly. So, anything less than that, we cannot do. We can't move forward, and I realize we've got a two- to three-month window for CDs for getting the construction documents to 65%. And that's ambitious, I'm sure we can meet it if we want to, but there are some issues that I think we absolutely have to address. Again, this is in no particular order, but let me start with the sidewalk café discussion. And there are a number of things I wanna hit related to that. I think it's incredibly important when we talk about that particular eatery, Mojos, on the East Main Street portion, that we acknowledge that this is an opportunity to do it right. The way it is currently is not right. We interrupt the sidewalk, we interrupt the path for a bump-out for a business. We've gotta tear it up, I realize that, and we've gotta put it back in. And I'm confident that Mojos will want and should get what they want as a business that's invested there, the outdoor eatery to continue out front. There should be a separation between the business and the area where they have tables, outdoor seating. Whether they want to replace it with a similar fence or something different, I'm sure we can work out, you can work out with Mojos, and that should be a conversation with the business entity. That should also be a cost that is covered by the city, and we're tearing that out. I don't think there should be a new investment by the business or building owner. I don't know what the plan is there, but that's something that I think is not something that should be expected, given that it's a public right-of-way, we're gonna tear it up, and we should play it back.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
You're talking about, so you're saying that sidewalks should continue, so you would have the front door of the building, sidewalk, and then the eatery part?
Absolutely.
That's gonna create problems with alcohol license, I believe.
And, no, it's not. Not, yes, it will with our Board of License Commissioners, and no, it's not in the state of Maryland, and no, it's not in the United States of America. We can put a thousand pictures of communities in Maryland and elsewhere where sidewalk cafes, and we actually have this discussion coming up on Council Agenda for this particular reason. It is allowed in our code, it is allowed in Maryland, it is allowed under Article 2B, and it should not be restricted by the Wycomico County Board of License Commissioners. And that's a fight we should fight.
That was my point. We're trying to have one, because that is part of why it is the way it is right now.
Yes.
That is how they should be designed with the sidewalk between the building and the eating, which is actually the bump-out.
So, we may have a conversation we have to have there, but it's one that should be done correctly, now that we have the opportunity to do it correctly. Other locations of outdoor seating, I didn't see outdoor seating in front of Maiabella's Pizzeria on West Main Street.
Is that the deli pizza place?
Yes. There is. There is.
And there's one on two sides of West Main Street, right there.
It's right here.
Ah, okay, yep, I was, I'm sorry, I thought the intersection to the right was Division and St. Peters.
Yeah, this is St. Peters here, so we did eatery here and then also the eatery here across at the coffee shop. And interestingly enough, we have, further down, we have new restaurants that are coming in.
The coffee shop is on the other side of the...
Yeah, that's Rowdy Joe's, actually.
You're correct, and we do have another eatery on that side.
Great, okay, all right, well, that addresses that question. Another question, and this also pertains to the Central City District Commission. The idea of providing consolidated parking meters, is that the desired alternative for, from the CCDC? Do they have an opinion on this?
Yes, yes, it is, and Jennifer Miller has been meeting with different vendors that provide those units. So, that is something CCDC supports, and she has been looking into other options. She has some preliminary locations of those, but we're actually gonna start showing them on the plans after the 65% once the light posts and the trees are nailed down a little bit better. But we've been meeting with her about that.
Okay.
So, she's looking into the different types, there's a few different varieties that she's looking at.
Yeah, if we're gonna go with that, the one thing that I would, or personally, would be one that you can replenish from your phone.
Yes.
That you don't have to walk back to the meter to put more money in. It beeps you and it says you're almost out of time, and you can re-up right on your phone.
Yep, that's really important. The reason I ask was just because there are other alternatives out there, such as no meters and doing a fine system, you know, a two-hour free parking, and then you're fined after that, which is preferred in some towns, Easton, Cambridge. But, you know, if CCDC has chosen their preferred, then, yeah, far be it for me to question that. The, let's go to Division Street for a moment, if we can. Yeah, let's look at that. I wanna talk about that plaza for a moment. What is the intended purpose and expected usability of that plaza area? Is that shown currently to have, to be curbless with bollards? Or is the intent for it to be curbed the way it is to that? Because the renderings, the conceptual renderings that we had from 2009 showed a brick surface on the street and a brick surface, they implied a brick surface on the street and a brick surface. And there have been several conversations about going to curbless there and adding cost, I'm sure, of lowering the grade of that plaza area, but going curbless there with bollards. And so, I'm wondering what the intended use is, you know, is the idea that the entire street area becomes a plaza that could be used as a space in total? Or is it, once again, street separated from plaza by curb?
Right now, we're showing street separated from a plaza by a curb.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that's the way it has to go. I still see that where that connects to 50 and you're crossing 50 and going north, I still see that as a street. So, we could talk about removing the curb and lowering that plaza area, but at this point, we were seeing really the plaza or the square as being what's outside of the street bed.
Okay. Which is a smaller space, not that that's a bad thing necessarily, but a smaller space. And also, looking at kind of the trend in our downtown festivals is to incorporate this portion of North Division Street into, and the plaza area, into the Main Street Festival Zone. And so, line of sight from the steps to the government office building to the intersection becomes...
That's not what I intended to do, I apologize.
It's all right.
Now, we have to figure out how we can do this again.
While we're getting that back up, I'll mention one thing. On West Main Street, we got a comment at the committee meetings to provide permanent barricades, maybe something that's in the street and can pop up, so it's a nicer-looking barricade at the Market Street side of West Main Street because that is...
The raisable bollards?
Yes, exactly, because that is blocked off so often for events, so that will be incorporated.
Really?
Yes, instead of dragging out the typical public works barricades.
Fancy.
We'll do something...
A lot easier and a lot more durable.
Lot more durable, lot more attractive.
Is that, would we go with the electronic raising bollards?
We're looking at some options.
Okay.
We're gonna make Jane jump up the phone.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking the same thing you're thinking, okay? What's that cost?
I've seen the same thing with bike racks that, and I think I talked about this quite a while back, that actually depress into the sidewalk, and then they just raise up and you put your bike on it.
Could we just do the entire streetscape as...
Sure, why not?
...pops up in the morning?
Like kids' books, when you open it up, the ball pops up and it's...
Trees, everything.
But the bike racks were very useful because when you have events like Third Friday and things like that, some of them could be used and some of them not, they're not trip hazards, they're not, you know, having, they're just a lot more.
Where was it then?
I'd have to find it again, but it was in, they had them in San Francisco, I believe, and they just went right down into the street, and then they, you just basically stepped on them with your foot and it popped up to hold your bike and then push it back down.
I do think I've seen that before.
We are looking at some options on bike racks, some that he had at the last presentation, which were curved and took up less sidewalk space, because we're gonna try to put all these features in that four-foot, four-and-a-half-foot buffer between the sidewalk and the curb.
So, we're looking at a minimum then of 11-foot...
Right.
...to the edge of the curb.
Right, that includes the treescape area, but you'll be able to walk there because that'll have pavers on it.
Okay, I understand. All right, so, let's talk about stormwater management for a second, because one of the things we have a responsibility, I think, to address through this project is to address some of the flooding on East Main Street. I recognize we're not gonna cure the problem, but to address the issue. There are a lot of business owners that have invested in that side of town, and they're going to be looking for, over the last 30 years, they're gonna be looking for this project to provide them with some benefits. When I look at the curb lines, that double line of curb, I'm interpreting that as all of that's curbing. Are we looking at sort of the open, kind of green street curbless method of addressing stormwater management? How are we, what's the section of the area where we have an inlet and a gutter?
True.
What does that look like?
Well, you're talking about two issues, that one is storm drain and making sure you don't have runoff and ponding, or you have the runoff, but it's not ponding. The other one is stormwater management and water quality. So, storm drain system, it is a curb system, there are gonna be inlets and pipes, as there is now. Some of the water will run into filter soils and open landscape areas. Some of the bump-outs will be open landscape, they will kind of have a curb opening where the water will run in, but for the most part, it is considered a closed drainage system.
We will have that kind of open curb and spots.
Only a few areas, yes, at the bump-outs, and that'll pick up some. We don't want any water sitting there, but it'll filter through. You design those so they filter, it's not ponding areas. The other issue is flooding and runoff, and that's an issue bigger than the streetscape, which Amanda has actually addressed or tried to address in some other ways.
We're not looking at the outfalls right now as part of this project. We had asked AMT to provide a change order for us to look at the outfalls and whether tied gates would be appropriate. After discussing it with procurement and getting the change order, we need to put that out separately. It was not within the original scope of the project, such that procurement was not comfortable with us adding that as a change order. So, we need to look, if we're looking to change outfalls.
Next fiscal year, is that something we're looking at in the budget?
It's gotta be tied in. It's gotta be tied in, doesn't it?
We just got the opinion from procurement last week, so now we're kind of in a fallback mode to figure out how to fund that piece. It's not substantial, though, at least in terms of the engineering.
I would highly recommend we look at, to the administration, that we look at FY15 for that, or 16, excuse me.
What about, topic of stormwater and drainage, is, are there any impervious, sort of like, you mentioned pavers, I've heard that the bricks are all coming up and being replaced with concrete and asphalt, but is there any, any other impervious surfaces?
There is, so, the cross-section, and I apologize if the PowerPoint has got it, but the cross-section, from basically, the sidewalk is now going to help us treat, it's going to help us treat stormwater, it's going to help us water our trees, and it is also going to help provide more root space for the trees to grow. And so, it's what we have, is we have a sidewalk in which people walk, and then next to it, we have a four-foot space. The four-foot space will have permeable pavement on it. The water will run off of our sidewalk, it will filter down below, and then, if you can imagine, underneath the entire sidewalk, we have a soil volume space in which the tree roots can grow and also be watered by the stormwater.
So, that four-foot landscaping strip, the buffer between the curb and the sidewalk, will be pervious, and not only will it run off the sidewalk, but anything that falls in that area will also settle in. The area that's considered plaza now on West Main Street, the surface, that will end up being paved as a road, but it'll still have a lot of the buffer, you'll still have the pervious four-foot buffer on both sides, and you'll still have some bump-outs that are landscaped to treat additional runoff, that will get some of the roadway runoff for stormwater management treatment.
Diane, could I ask, did we get the audiovisual stuff back up? I think we turned that off for some reason. I don't know if the remote's working, Kowry. I know that the...
Is the laptop still...
The laptop was...
All right, while we're working on that...
Are any of the storm drains filtra, like the tree of the box thing, or it's just that it's because you've got the thing underneath, you don't need that?
Well, filtra, I mean, it's similar in that they both treat stormwater management, the soils under the sidewalk and under these pervious pavers will treat runoff, we're just not taking all the road runoff and sending it into there.
The methodology that we're proposing is similar to that. The ideal, though, is that it allows us to actually plant larger trees. The filtra system will only allow us to plant smaller underscorey trees, so the types of trees that are not as desirable on a street, to create the streetscape that we're looking for.
Because if it's filtra, it's actually a concrete box, and the tree roots can expand in those boxes.
That's correct.
I have a question about, in front of what is now Avery Hall, it's at the end of East Main Street at Route 13, there is a bump-out there now, which is, in my opinion, a traffic hazard rather than anything else. Is that going to be revised?
There will still be a bump-out there.
For traveling eastbound?
Yes, traveling eastbound, right before you get to Route 13. I don't know if it's in the exact same location, but there's still a bump-out where then the right, or the right and straight lane starts before Route 13.
That does, actually, that kind of defines between on-street parking, and then that's gonna be a right-turn lane beyond that. So, we wanted to keep that open as a right-turn lane, it needs it for storage, but we wanted to define where the on-street parking was and then real through lane begins.
I've heard lots of complaints about people running into that thing because it's not all that visible, and it does take your car out of alignment.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense. Well, you know, we can, we don't wanna put signs up everywhere either to overcrowd the place, but hopefully, there'll be landscaping that'll be visible, and it'll be maybe better lit also because we'll have improved streets.
That would be a plus, thank you.
I'm so glad you just brought up signs, but before we get to that, can we talk about materiality for a second? Yes. Yes, you, um, there was just a question about brick, um, and what's coming out. And if, you know, we've got, currently got a Frankenstein of materials on the Plaza and it's kind of a mess. A little bit of brick, a little bit of concrete, a little bit of asphalt. The crosswalk shown in the images of other projects that you showed was, was that stamped or was that real brick?
Well, we're not, we're not committing to anything that we showed because they were images, but we do want them to look like stamped.
You sound like a politician right now.
But we want them to look like stamped and we haven't decided on the material. It's something we're going to investigate. Steve's gonna come up with, um, uh, pros and cons for each one as well as costs. We've heard that maintenance here really doesn't like the brick, although we may find ways to make it work. Um, and they may be better with it. You have to look at how are you gonna maintain it, how long is it gonna last, when you mill and overlay it, are you tearing it up? If you tear it up, is it easy to replace, is it expensive to replace? If you paint it, is it gonna wear off and you're gonna see tire lines? So, um, a lot of communities, everybody does something different, it seems. We have a lot of suggestions. Steve works as a landscape architect with these features all the time, so he has a good feel for, um, I think what he wants to recommend actually, but we'll, we'll, we'll come up with options. And we want them very visible.
Steve, can you go back to the Division Street for a second?
I'll try not to.
Or that, that one, any of those are mine. I mean, what, what's being shown here as well is some brick in the sidewalk corridor and in that four and a half foot space. So is the thought that there would be brick off-street on, in, and?
But different materials.
Yes.
Okay.
Because those are pervious.
But they'll be pervious, they're
Those will be the pervious.
Yeah, they'll be pervious pavers. They don't necessarily look like red brick even. We haven't come, we haven't made that decision yet.
Okay, but that's the pervious.
Right here.
Got it.
So these will all be bricks.
Okay.
But not necessarily what we're doing in the crosswalks.
Right, understood.
That could be a, a different material. However, the desire would be to have it match so that it seems like a cohesive landscape.
Sure. Can we now go to the Division Street image plan? Thank you.
Don't let me touch them.
At the northwest corner of North Division Street. North of the, uh, what is currently Salisbury University Art Gallery and Cake Art. Right there, there is a, um, an area that is no parking, um, but it is, I, I would guess about fifty feet wide, the street at that point. It is incredibly wide. The business owners there, Salisbury University, uh, gallery, um, the, uh, Cake Art and, uh, the Strott, the, um...
Attorneys.
Attorney. Uh, the conversation that I have heard coming from the business owners is that they would like to see a bump out there. And if we, I, I think we've got about fifty plus feet, if it was possible at the very north end on the west side of that street to do that, where there's no, there's no parking, there's nothing right now. And narrow the street and cut one of the turn lanes, because right now there are three turn lanes where you, and you never get a deep stack. If, if it would be possible to do that and do, go to two turn lanes in the northbound side and then just one lane southbound, you'd end up with a much neater street and a nice little bump out area. I don't know how the business owners would want that used, but it's probably something worth talking to them about, whether they'd want that to be seating, planting, bike racks, whatever.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, the project limits only go up to the government office building, so I'm not sure if this is referring to beyond that.
It is across the street.
Right across from it.
Right outside the window.
It's, it's right there.
It's where those board knees are.
The four trees.
It's at the northernmost, most tree, really. The northernmost tree.
Well, okay, I, I, we have to look at the dimensions because from what I could tell, the turn lane is kind of continuous. It's either going north and to fifty or south to main. And so it's either the turn lane in one direction or the other.
What, what, wait, it's, well, I, I can tell you, right now it's three northbound lanes.
Right up there.
Yeah, a, a, a straight, a right turn, a left turn. There's never deep stacks there. And then there's one southbound lane.
Well, we, we certainly can consider it. I mean, we have on, on-street parking on the west side of Division Street. Do they wanna bump out and on-street parking?
Um, at the northernmost point where there's nothing currently, there's not even
Right up here.
It, it, there's a, there's a no parking sign and nothing there currently, the northernmost point. And I don't know how deep that would have to go, whether that's one parking space, two parking spaces.
Are you referring to the right turn lane turning onto the Plaza? Cause didn't you mention that the one way would be changing?
No.
No, he's talking about right outside the window.
We're waiting.
You're up towards fifty.
Oh, that one there.
Right north of the
Oh, yeah, basically, basically right, right here.
We're right here. So this is fifty right here and it's this corner right here.
Yes.
A bump out would slow traffic too, make that more like, you've already entered downtown.
So people weren't speeding into them.
I'd also say that stretch on that side of the street just feels unsafe as a female walking. You have that alleyway there and it's a very narrow sidewalk without walking into the street. Um, it's not very well lit. That particular stretch is not very appealing for people walking.
Right. And, and crossing the street from GOB, from the government office building to the Cake Art Salisbury University Art Gallery side is a, is a large stretch and anybody coming off of fifty is probably going thirty-five miles an hour. So, you know, pretty dangerous. And this, that might, you know, tighten that up. And if it is beyond this, the geographic scope, whatever we need to do.
Exactly. That's right.
Whatever, you know, budget, you know, let's do this right. Whatever we need to do. Okay, uh, let's talk about the, uh, traffic direction on the Plaza. You know, I, I, I think you've made the right decision in terms of revitalization and economic development. My, my one caveat to that, you know, I think for a long time, the, the image that everyone has had of downtown Salisbury who moved out to the west side where most of the residential development was in the nineteen nineties and nineteen eighties was, do not enter downtown. Do not come in. You know, there is literally a sign, do not enter, um, one way. So what I'd hate for us to do, however, is to simply flip that. And now the place where most people know the entrance of the downtown Plaza as, uh, from Main Street headed west at Division Street, do not enter, do not come in here. So I, I realize I'm proposing a problem and the solution is either flip it and keep it how it is or really change dramatically what we're talking about doing with the street. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna do that. But if we can get creative about signage and not have big do not enter signs, if we can get creative about the, the, uh, the way that it's landscaped, I think it could be still appealing and clearly open to pedestrians and clearly open to anyone who wants. But the, the primary vehicular user is going to come from the west side. Most people have to drive around. You know, I'm not, I don't live on the west side, but most people who come into, you know, downtown and most of our residential development being to the west, um, over twenty years. So the only alternative, and I hesitate to even bring this up. The only alternative, do you mind pulling up the western portion of West Main, the eastern portion of West Main Street? Uh, next.
Right, the
Eastern portion of West Main Street. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
At the Division Street intersection.
Do we not have that?
No.
We don't have it.
At Mill Street.
No.
No, between St. Peters and Division.
Yeah, I don't.
Do we not have that image?
No, I, I took it out to make sure, and I should've left it in, obviously.
Sorry.
This chunk, right here.
The only, the only alternative is on that chunk. And I'm using that as a technical term, chunk.
Because I used it.
Having dual direction.
That's right.
Dual directional traffic.
You know, we got that same comment from a CCDC member who, who made that same comment. So we, we talked about it some
Did you measure it now? I know it would be tight.
It dramatically impacts parking. Part of what we had charged AMT with at the beginning was to maximize parking. So making that section two-way, I guess in my opinion, it pushed those do not enter signs just another block.
It does.
So I, I'd like to, what, what we're doing right now and the way we talked about it is how can we be creative with the signage? Because that is certainly a valid comment. We've now heard it twice and, and I agree completely. We don't want these huge do not enter signs. And, and again, we need to make it safe for vehicles and pedestrians and, and everyone else, but we're very conscious of not having large do not enter signs. That's not the, the, the entry that you wanna have onto West Main Street. So we are looking at some options there, but
You can just do spikes on the road that flatten the tires if you go.
Right. Kidding.
Enter once on, you'll never do this again.
Because we are signalized right here and we will have signals, there is an opportunity to be able to use those signals to our advent to, to help us actually. Because as people are coming up, the arrows will be, you, you won't have a, just a green or a green red light is what you'll have. You'll have arrows that point you one way or the other. And those arrows can help signify as opposed to saying, do not enter here. We would still put signs up to say one way, um, to make sure that things happen. So we'll have to look at the, uh, MUTCD, which is the manual that drives the safety portion of it that we are supposed to follow and, and see how we can make this work.
Okay. And Baron, hey, go ahead.
I'm sorry I'm late. I, I hit them on the meeting before to apologize. Um, you're talking about between
St. Peters and Division.
St. Peters and Division. How about, what are we doing from, I'm skipping now. Cause I remember how it was, two ways, people walk up down, all this stuff. From Mill Street to Division. I'm hearing people want it to be two ways of traffic. I hear this shaking ahead, but when you close the street off, when you make it one way, um, it deters people, in my opinion, from coming downtown. Most towns that close their streets off kill the downtown. I look at Berlin and I'm down there quite often. They have two-way traffic in the whole town. And people walk and people visit. And I think that they should have, I just think about the expense of doing that. But the two-way traffic where people can drive both directions. Because you're keeping, same one way, you're keeping people out. You know, you're keeping people out one direction, either west or east, you're keeping them out of the, they, they I don't know why we can't make it back to Berlin. I just don't understand it. Why we can't make, spend money to go to the moon and waste twenty million dollars to make a street, uh, uh, two-way track. I don't understand that.
I couldn't agree, I couldn't agree with you more. I just know it won't fit. It won't fit on that portion.
Well, not with parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to eliminate all the parking.
Well, how come it fitted before?
So the reason, oh, oh, so this, this was once upon a time, this is, this is an old postcard. And the reason is, is because the sidewalks were only, they were very, very skinny. And so that's how it fit before.
Okay. Because I just, you know, it was a beautiful downtown walk back, you know.
Look at that sidewalk in front of those pillars at, at All First.
Yeah.
I think there should be a sidewalk.
And you also notice that there were no street trees. And so for us to be able to incorporate street trees, we need that extra space. So as soon as you put the sidewalk in and the street trees, then there is not enough room for parking. So now we have to decide, do we put parking in or do we have two-way traffic? Or do we eliminate the street trees?
So are you telling me that on that portion of the street, if maintaining the current dimensions that you're showing for the sidewalk and the street tree corridor, without parking, you could have two-way traffic? You could have twenty feet, let's say, for
Yes.
Well
Yes.
It's a fifteen foot traveling and two seven foot parking lanes right now, right?
Right, that's fourteen, fifteen, that's twenty-eight. So, but you wouldn't have any parking.
But no parking?
You wouldn't have, dear parking and no bump out.
Not even on one side.
We're, we're gonna get to that.
And street lighting, I still have to deal with as well.
Mr. Borde, do you have something?
I do. Good evening.
Hey, you wanna come to the mic front? I know we've, we've kind of interacted in a casual way, but well, you stood up and you were kind of gonna formally address though, you know, we're gonna do that.
Bring a chair.
Might as well get it on the record.
Oh.
How are you?
Good evening.
Um, the question I have is on the downtown Plaza. How many parking spaces are suggested now with the new design?
Which area?
The, the West Main.
What we, what we call the Plaza, West Main.
Um, we will have twenty-eight spaces.
That's excellent.
And I think there's only the, under twelve.
There's five.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Five to seven. Are they diagonal spaces or are they parallel parking spaces? Twenty-eight?
Yes.
Okay. And I have two other questions because I'm, I'm gonna have to run just, uh, Jake, I guess I'm gonna ask you this. We've met before. Is the financing one hundred percent done deal?
My, well, no, because each year it has to be funded, but my understanding from the administration is that it will be in this year's budget.
Is eight million for all three phases or the first phase?
That's all.
All, all three phases. Okay. And the only thing I would say, I, I have an interest in the Mojos area down that way. And I would simply, I think Jake's point was excellent. These guys have spent a lot of money there. They're, they're tenants of mine. These guys have spent a lot of money there, have been creative. They're the first ones to do the, the eating out on the sidewalk. Take care of them. When you have to take, tear the sidewalk up, put it back, put their stuff back if you need to replace it. Don't charge them a nickel. They have gone way beyond the call of duty, what they're doing, and they're making, and they're making a run at it. Rob and Joel have done just wonderful, wonderfully there. And I'm excited about it. And for our quarter down on East Main Street, we can't wait for it to start. Is October a fairly firm starting day of next year?
I believe so, and that is, we budgeted in our CIP next year. We've talked to the finance department about how we're gonna bond fund it. And I think as far as getting the funding in place, if everything goes well, that, that is very realistic.
I, I think Amanda, if I can, you were looking at me, I think that was to say that if you stop asking questions, Jake, yes.
No, no, that's not
We'll get there by October.
Stop making changes.
Finally, there's been some, uh, surprising talk to me about there's some refinancing going on downtown for certain commercial buildings. And I've still heard from time to time that peo- people maybe in the older generation, which I guess I'm soon to be part of, if I'm not right now, that downtown is dead. And all I keep telling them is just wait a year from now and you'll, and you'll see a whole new rebirth of downtown. And I'm hoping it's that way and I, we really appreciate it as being the downtown merchants and taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the only way you can, uh, you can say downtown is dead with a straight face is if you haven't been here in the last eighteen months. Yes?
Tom Welch Traffic and Safety Committee.
Tom, you wanna come up or?
Okay.
I have a question regarding the eatery bump outs. Are we talking about storefront eatery sidewalk going around? We're talking about pedestrians going through the eatery?
Absolutely.
I see a safety problem. I see a safety problem with waitstaff getting mixed in with pedestrians.
Every, every community in America but this one right now has exactly that, so
I still see a problem.
We've gotta get on board with the rest of America, yeah, and the world. If you've ever been to Paris, yes, Belgium, if you've ever been anywhere else.
Kane Bristow has theirs right up against the building.
And, and, and news have always been that way, even back when, before, you know, the revitalization began there. But, uh, you know, it's, it's the exception, not the rule. The rule is the sidewalk goes right there.
I have a question. You came to actually speak to our class of Florida and talk about how like college students kind of make up like the downtown you want. Like you've kind of did like the trolleys, are they all ground to downtown? Like how do you think that this construction is gonna affect that? And like, do you think it, cause I know like roadie dress, I think it's roadie dress or motor式, it's like kind of outside, like hanging out outside. So is that gonna like affect, do you think the population of Palisades that I've done?
Do, do you wanna speak to the, the process of, you know, phasing and keeping pieces open and?
It's actually during construction.
During construction.
So during construction, it will be disruptive to some sense. And we're going to work with the businesses and the residents downtown as much as we can, but utilities will occur first. So the, the major construction will occur in the roadbed and while that's going on, the sidewalks would remain in place. So that's part of why we have all these committees involved is to make sure that we are safe and protecting pedestrian access and vehicular access during construction. We're working with the CCDC on where to direct people to park while different blocks are under construction. And so once the, um, the utilities are complete, then we will start replacing the sidewalks before the, the road is done, which is usually the last thing. So we will tear out the sidewalks. There'll be certain areas that are blocked off, but we always have to maintain pedestrian access to all the buildings. So some of the outdoor activities will be a little bit challenging because it is, it is gonna be dusty and dirty. It's a construction zone for a while, but we think each phase will be about one year, but that doesn't mean you'll lose sidewalks for that entire year. It'll, it'll be an ongoing process. And we'll try to tear them up and come right behind and be replacing them.
So although there will be three phases, it will be a continuous project?
Right now, that's the way Right now, that's the way we're looking at it, is for them to be going back to back to back. That's how we've proposed it in the CIP, is that we'll start with East Main Street first, then West Main Street, and then North Division Street is the third piece of it. So these would be three years back to back to back.
Okay. Okay. Yes?
I have a question. Going back to the proposal to the direction of the street and the plaza and the parking spaces, the added parking spaces, are they gonna be added on both sides of the street?
Yes.
So red.
It'll be centered, so the lane will be centered.
On the front or on the left? Not saying enough about different urban infrastructure with parking, with the hopes of that and the bike lane in that, do other communities maybe have two-way, only parking on one side of the street to lend way to maybe a bike lane on the other side of the street, so that you kind of have more parking, a bike lane, but you can still get two-way traffic?
If you're gonna add, if you were, had the room to add a bike lane, it would have to be added on both sides for both directions. There are some cities that do it only on one side, but that's only if it's extra wide, maybe 10 feet wide, and you can actually separate it with bollards from the lanes. Otherwise, the bike lane's always with each lane or each direction, and we certainly don't have room for that on the west end. So, and then, you know, there's other considerations about the bike lane and parking indoors and things like that.
So, so you wouldn't be able to just have street, have the one side of the street to lend way to have two-way traffic?
No, there's none. So if the parking bay is only seven feet wide, that's where your lane would have to be? As currently have...
It's hard to hear your explanation without...
We'll have to use the speaker.
Sorry. Trying to fix that. I know.
So, okay, so a parking bay on that side is only seven feet wide, so we have a seven-foot lane, seven-foot parking, and then you have a lane that's 15 feet, and then you'd have another seven-foot parking, so that's 22 feet. So that would be two lanes, that would be, you could possibly do, it'd be very tight two lanes, but you couldn't have, you couldn't have a seven-foot bike lane.
Okay. I, I don't have it up now because we're, my computer's, there we go. So just a couple images of what dining on the street looks like all over the country with the sidewalk passing in between. This is, you know, temporary extensions rather than permanent. This is no barrier whatsoever. In fact, that's actually curbless, that's actually down at street grade. There, you can see it's kind of packed in. There's an image where it's, there's a permanent barrier. That place I can confirm has alcohol service.
Yeah, it's Asheville.
Yeah, it's Asheville. I'd be in there. This is Greenville, where the sidewalk actually passes in between tables. You actually walk between tables that are against the building and then on the other side. This is also, this is Frederick subway.
That's a carryout place more than, than tableside services. I'm seeing dogs walking through there, and I'm thinking health department issues.
I mean, again, we can identify, we can come up with reasons to say, oh, government doesn't allow us to do that, but yes, it does. There it is, everywhere. It's allowed. We do it, you know, we just have to get over this nonsense kind of reaction to saying we have to have walled-in, protected, you know, dining at the expense of a successful downtown and a successful economic revitalization. We have to get over that. This is, you know, it's what's been holding us back and holding us back and holding us back. Anyway, I have one other kind of big topic that I wanted to address.
This is one you're going to bring up, you want the entire street escape to be a solar panel.
Sure.
You have a problem with that?
That one didn't make my list.
Can we have, see, this is a question I, some will think it foolish, but heated sidewalks, do we have the capacity for keeping our sidewalks warmer than freezing so that those areas can be used in winter as well?
There is such a thing as heated pavement. Where they run coils for the pavement.
There is, it can be done. There is obviously a price that is associated with it.
Well, along with the panels, we should be able to work that out.
But yes, it can be done.
So given that we have 15-foot one-way street right now shown on West Main Street?
Correct.
Okay. What's the lane width on East Main?
There are 12-foot lanes in each direction.
12-foot lanes in each direction, okay. Given that we adopted a complete streets policy which references the eventual adoption of the NACTO standards, which allow us to go down to either 10-foot lanes or to do away with center, center lanes, center lines entirely, and still have two-lane, just like on most residential streets, you know, two-way but no center line. It seems to me a pretty big missed opportunity to, at least on West Main, not to have one bike lane, dedicated bike lane shown. I realize you can ride your bike all over that lane right now, as shown, with the sharos, even without sharos, you can ride your bike all over it. It seems to me a missed opportunity not to have a dedicated bike lane protected on one side or the other of that street. And I realize now that only gives us four feet on East Main, but is that, would it be possible to give it a seven-foot parking on one side, eight-foot on the other, and get a fifth foot?
Are we talking about West Main or East Main?
Well, I was just talking about both. So on West Main, we've got 15-foot lane.
And it's a five-foot bike lane.
We could cut five feet off, get a 10-foot lane. People are gonna be driving slow through there anywhere, it's, anyway, it's tight.
Right.
We don't need 15-foot vehicular lanes. You know, that's freeway, you know, we don't, we don't need that. But on East Main, two 12-foot, if we reduced one of the parking spaces on, parking on one side to seven-foot, we'd pick up that fifth foot, and we'd have a five-foot bike lane on that side. Realize it would only get us one dedicated bike lane, but then the entirety of Main Street, symbolically at least, would show that dedicated bike infrastructure.
So you're still saying 10-foot lanes on the east end?
10-foot on both sides.
We, we have a lot of, we have some documentation that says they do not recommend a 10-foot lane in a corridor like that. It's okay in a residential neighborhood or very small, but this isn't, this is a collector, it's not really, it's not a residential street.
It's not a residential street, but it's also not a collector.
There's always exceptions, I mean, there are exceptions. And so they would not recommend it in a place like that. The other issue is, I would think that if you put a bike lane on one side, someone's gonna want a bike lane on the other side, because you're only gonna have, you'd have one sharo and one bike lane, is what you would end up with, is what you're suggesting. And then you have the parking issue, where people want eight-foot wide parking. So could you go to 10 feet, it's not recommended by ASHTO standards?
I know, but we wanna do away with ASHTO standards. We wanna scrap ASHTO.
Well, ASHTO are standards, they're not guidelines.
We wanna scrap ASHTO and go to NACTO.
Not even in NACTO. I sent him some backup information about why this corridor would not be recommended for two 10-foot lanes. The other thing is, if you got your five-foot, now you have a 10-foot lane that's also a sharo, so you really are tight on that bike lane, you know, the bike facility, but they have the right to the whole lane, so they actually have a 10-foot.
Yes, they do. I realize that. I realize we're talking about something that is already allowed.
If you, if the city wanted 10-foot lanes, we could do 10-foot lanes, but I can show you why it would not be recommended.
But if we're talking about the other, about the...
Go ahead.
Yeah, if we're talking about the west end, if it's one way anyway...
I think that the west end is less complex, to be honest, because first off, that additional space is giving us a little bit of a buffer, and especially for emergency vehicles. But if it's a bike lane, those emergency vehicles can just drive into the bike lane. So I think that West Main is, is a lot simpler to go ahead and proceed with that 10-foot lane and the bike lane as a separated, dedicated. It's on, it's on East Main that I think it becomes a little bit more complex, but we can obviously discuss it.
Let's talk, let's talk about that West Main portion and the strategic importance of it, too. Right now, our orange route bike lane comes into downtown through Carroll up Division, and then ends at Main Street. And if it were to turn west, you know, something we'll be discussing in a few weeks, I believe, is the continuation of bike lanes on, on both sides, but on West Main and Fitzwater, all the way out to Parsons, there will be a gap, but then the most biked road in Wycomica County is Pemberton. So you're talking about taking all of the red and orange bike route up through downtown, across the plaza, and then out to...
You couldn't turn west because vehicles are not going that way. So bicycles could not go that way. They have to go in the same direction as vehicles. I, I know where you were going, and that's why I wanted to jump in on that.
You couldn't have, you couldn't have bikes as one, as the, call it a two-way street, and bikes are allowed one way, vehicles the other?
And it's called a contraflow bike lane.
A contraflow bike lane.
Usually would have barriers between the lane then and the traffic.
Okay, I like that.
That have to be maintained and replaced, when a car hits them, but...
But then I guess it would be a question for that same bike lane coming eastbound from Pemberton connecting downtown.
Well, certainly...
The only issue if you're coming out, as you, and then making that left on West Main.
To your point, what we, I mean, it could be one way into...
Yes.
And one way, one way into all the way to Division Street.
Right. Coming off of the new bike lanes on Riverside Drive, which are about to be improved, kind of...
Well, if they're coming in on Main, couldn't they go back out on, what's the one on the other side of the MDT?
On Camden.
Camden Street. Camden Street, sure, of course, of course.
So, I mean, it's just a loop, and then they go back out and go out that way.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good point. That's the other thing we pick up by changing direction, is we pick up Camden and, Camden and Main are now opposite directions.
Yes, they make a nice loop. That's exactly right.
Where now it's, everything goes the same way, you're stuck.
Right.
Okay. And, and East Main is problematic, is more problematic because of the, if we were to pick up two feet from each lane?
You mean narrowing it to 10 feet wide, that more of a problem? I just think the amount of traffic and it's two-directional traffic, you know, most main streets like this are striped, like you have a yellow stripe down the middle.
As Kathy mentioned, that's gaining us one bike lane, so the other 10-foot lane is a shared lane, which is, which is very narrow.
Okay. Did you have one more thing?
And I might have lost on the sidewalks, they seem as they are on East Main, or are they going to expand it from part of the tree?
There's, they're 11 and a half feet, as shown, so...
The sidewalk width doesn't change anything at all?
It is a little bit wider. It's seven-foot true sidewalk in that four-foot landscape area, but it's a walkable area. It's where the pervy as favors are, but they are walkable, so we feel like it's 11-foot.
So in that expansion, then limits our opportunity to have two...
We definitely don't want to take space away from that. That's, I mean, that's really kind of the most important piece of the economic puzzle, is how much, is dedicating, you know, eight feet, but 11 and a half total with that.
Right, because the seven-foot sidewalk is important to have. You could be done at five, but you have doors opening and closing and people coming out, so you really want the seven-foot width that's recommended. And the four-foot is where all your horse-peak and streets, where even lighting is going, so... Can we get back to West Main for just a second? Should we proceed with a dedicated bike lane on West Main? Have a 10-foot travel lane and a five-foot dedicated bike lane?
I think, it is my opinion, and let's see what counseling is, that we're missing an opportunity to, to talk about cycling in this community and how important it's become and how big it's become to not show a dedicated bike lane in that, in that space.
I think that every time we have the opportunity to look at bike lanes, we should maximize that opportunity.
I, I agree, that's, that's a priority.
That's, like they said, that's probably the easiest change to make on West Main, that's, that's not a problem.
I have a question. It's five or seven? Is it seven or five, five or seven?
Yes.
Are we going to discuss this again?
Yes.
Because I'm, I'm just making a suggestion, and the ideas that we brought from the talk about, and I know we have people out of town and staff and all that.
And I'm done.
Oh, thank you.
Really? Always wondering when the medication was gonna kick in.
Well, I got the look, you know? You're done.
I know this is the first time we discussed it, and I think as method as it is, and very important that, you know, just want to fly through it, and, and, and I, computers aren't writing, but you know, you need to see what we discussed, so I can really digest.
You are scheduled to see it again, and if we need to add another interim meeting, we could talk about doing that.
Yeah, I, I think this kind of discussion should be just maybe, this particular issue by ourselves.
So let me say, thank you for everything, and thank you for engaging the public the way you have, the community, the business and building owners, property owners, and the committees. That was one of the things that we thought was really important to this contract, and thank you for delivering.
I have two quick things. One, could we get that PowerPoint email to us this time? And next time, could we get it in advance so that we can all have our questions? It's a little bit difficult to do those on the fly when you haven't seen that before.
Yeah.
Can I just, and we send the last PowerPoint we put together?
Sure, the longer version?
Yes.
Yeah, this was the shortened version, so we have a longer one.
That's fine, just so we have something to look at from what we've done tonight, and the next time that we have it in advance.
Sure.
I agree. All, all of my questions written on the fly would probably be a little more concise and organized if we had had that in advance.
Because I know I'm gonna lay awake tonight and think of 20 questions I should...
And you can certainly send those to us.
Oh, you know I will.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to the Pinehurst Avenue parking discussion, and then we're gonna take a quick break. Amanda, you...
Yes, me again. Pinehurst Avenue parking was brought up by the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee a few months ago, and it was discussed mainly because of the narrow street widths along Pinehurst Avenue, and the concern that when cars park there, whether emergency vehicles can safely travel down the street, and even whether two-way traffic can, can safely travel. So Public Works took some measurements, and we did some traffic counts, and you've heard a lot about street widths and parking widths tonight, so this flows right into that. Pinehurst Avenue, in the blocks between Camden Avenue and Smith Street, and then down to Loracrop, is only 25 feet wide. So we technically have two eight-and-a-half-foot travel lanes and one eight-foot wide parking lane. So as you know from this discussion, eight-and-a-half-foot wide travel lanes are extremely narrow and are much more narrow than, than our standard, even for a residential area. We would typically like to see 11-foot travel lanes. So the discussion of the committee was whether or not we should first look at one-way traffic. So Public Works did traffic counts, and although we found that there was twice as much traffic going westbound than eastbound, there were significant volumes in both directions. So the committee did not recommend one-way traffic. Instead, they felt like, due to the safety issues and the narrowness of the street, the recommendation is to eliminate parking. And the recommendation is to eliminate parking on the south side of Pinehurst, between Camden Avenue and Smith Street, and then parking switches to the north side between Smith Street and Loracrop Avenue. So there would be no parking between Camden and Loracrop. We spoke to Salisbury University facilities staff, because we feel that much of the daytime parking in that area is from Salisbury University students. They did note that they have a lot of major improvements going on on campus, that their preference would be for us to wait for, until some of those projects were done, but that's not until June 2016. So after speaking to the committee further, we would like to try to recommend that this start with the next semester, which would be January 5th. So pending the discussion tonight, if this is favorable, we would put out signs now, basically alerting people that this could happen, so that they are aware and could come discuss it at, at one of the legislative meetings when the ordinance is being considered.
meetings when the ordinance is being considered, and also they would have a month's notice that this change was gonna happen.
What about the residents there? I would prefer to hear from them before an ordinance is considered. Have we contacted them? Did we do anything to reach them, or we assume?
I can tell you that my breakfast location is the bagel shop, and a lot of the residents frequent that every, every morning. I'm there every morning. And we have, we've had a lot of people come up to me and say, listen, I understand you're considering this, and their issue is not the fact that the streets, they all agree the streets are narrow and need to be wider. And they also agree that the university parking is the major issue. And I can tell you, driving down, going from the bagel place to work, you can see that it's students that are filling those places, and you can tell you almost the exact time and the exact time they're gonna leave. The one issue that the residents have, Matt can speak to it, I need to say he's on the same, the same place, but the one issue they have is, if you do it and say there's no parking, or there's parking on one side, there's not an issue after five o'clock generally, and the residents have no place when they get visitors to come and park, and especially on holidays and the like. They, they asked for consideration if we could find some way of doing it. And I know that they have some places where there's no, you can park after five or, and there's some places that have permit, certainly in the, in the non, some of the county, non-annexed areas, they have that, that thing. And it seems to work okay. But just to keep that in mind, there's no, I don't think there's any disagreement that there's an issue there. My issue is, if I was living on that street and I have company coming, and to have no place to park, because everybody's seen the driveways over there and the amount of parking places that are personal, there's no room.
Well, doesn't it say by permit only for most of the parking there now? The signs that I saw, I saw a number of permit parking signs, but apparently that's not being enforced.
Just on Clermont, it does not.
It does not on Pinehurst. Right, so where I live on, on North Clermont, it's, it's permit, residential permit parking only on North Clermont, no parking on Smith, and then anybody can park on this block of Pinehurst currently, so...
I Google-erred it last night and drive it down with my little Google camera. It said permit only.
Not on Pinehurst. Yeah, not on this.
I'm pretty sure.
Not on this block of Pinehurst.
Okay.
I, I, I would agree with, with, with Jack that, oh, first off, this is Matt Drew at 301 North Clermont, that, that it's, it certainly would be good if, if there is some ability to have some flexibility in the policy. I can tell you, you know, many is the day when school is in session that's difficult for me to get out of my driveway because the, the, I guess the fees associated with on-campus parking and the desire of people that, to park and walk a few blocks of the university is great. The other concern, though, that I have is that it, it is a through street, and, and I'd like to, you know, as much as possible, make sure that the, that the laws in place are enforced, so that the four-way stop that's at the intersection of, of Smith and Pinehurst is honored that, that the speed limits are obeyed and that, you know, our law enforcement folks make sure that, that those things continue to happen as much as possible.
And we have heard from a couple residents, thank you, Mr. Drew, a couple residents, and, and in addition to the weekend and evening recommendation, or evening recommendation, those weekends and holidays requested as well. So, if there's a way to accommodate all of that, I think that would be the best outcome for all.
I don't know if Tom...
Yeah, Tom, did you have?
In the interest of full disclosure, in addition to chairman of the safety committee, I reside at 224 North Clermont.
You know it.
So, yes, we know the problem. Matt and I know the problem very well. The houses that are in the block from, let me get my directions right, from Camden to Loracrop, between North Clermont and Pinehurst, there's two blocks of houses. There are not houses on both streets. There is one row of houses that front on one street and rear on the other street. So, therefore, the parking concern, if you're outside of college hours and outside of the permit hours, anyone with visitors in any of those houses that back on Pinehurst have plenty of parking on North Clermont. And in fact, there are many residents who have the same driveway problem that Matt has, who don't even use their driveways on Pinehurst. They get their permits and they park on North Clermont.
Thank you, Tom.
That's another issue with driveways that I personally experienced on Middle Neck. Tom, you know, five years I've been talking about this one, and it's not nearly as narrow. So, I can understand, I know that, where you're talking about, but when you get cars parked, particularly in the evening, both sides of the streets are lined and you've got buses and trucks that aren't supposed to be coming through there, but there are businesses there. It's the only way in. They're, it's, they're surrounded by no trucks, traffic. So, they come through there and they fly through there, and there, it's barely wide enough for two cars. So, you get people that drive right down the middle. But my question is, do we have anything, or is there a possibility of, of creating some buffer around those driveways? Because you get somebody with a, a large box van or just even a regular van parked right at the end of your driveway. You cannot see to get out, and that's the problem we have, where they're flying back and forth. You, you can't see what's coming. It's not safe to get out of your driveway.
And if you have to look at your street.
Please do. Middle Neck between, particularly between Deborah and, I guess, Moss Hill Lane is really the bottleneck there.
And, and the quick answer without looking at it is to stripe the parking spaces so that you can't park right up against the driveway, but have it striped such that there is some buffer around the driveway area. And, and just to speak very quickly about the comment about allowing parking after five, weekends and holidays, just speaking from the committee and hearing their discussion, it was safety-based. They were not trying to eliminate student parking, so that safety issue would still occur on evenings and weekends if we allow parking on the street, is, is it was really due to the street width that they made that recommendation. So, I think, speaking for the committee and whether or not Tom would back me up, I, I think their recommendation would be no parking at any time because of the widths.
Concur.
Okay.
Long as we're talking about parking, I think we need to look at some curb painting in, especially the university area, where there is, you know, it's ten feet from a, an unmarked corner and twenty feet from a, from a traffic marked corner. So, if we could give that a look, please.
But if I'm not mistaken, on Pinehurst, there aren't even any curbs to par, to paint, correct? It's just grass on, on, at least on the, if you're coming off 13 and going down Pinehurst, a lot of that, where there's houses running on one street and backed up to Pinehurst, it's just grass on the other side. I don't think there is a curb there.
It's actually so overgrown, you can't see the curb, but there, it is curb.
It is. There is one. Okay. I didn't think there was one.
Yeah, and the corner of Smith and Pinehurst is, it's curbed and it's painted, back about thirty-five feet or so.
So...
But nothing at the driveways is...
If I understand correctly, we've got a recommendation that includes no parking...
Correct.
And putting up no parking signs.
Correct.
We have a request from the residents that amends that slightly. It says, weekends, evenings and holidays. And we have a, somehow a consideration of the university's timeline for capital projects in there as well. What is the, why would we wait for the university's timeline? Can you help me?
Because right now, where they're constructing the new library, I believe, they've, they've lost a lot of parking off of Route 13, so they have already displaced some people. Now, they just opened their new parking lot off of College Avenue where the tennis courts used to be.
Yeah, they think that would relieve parking.
Which, which certainly relieves, but that's for staff, I believe, and, if I'm wrong.
Staff.
Faculty and staff on that?
Faculty and staff, yes. So, I think it was more directed at student parking, but my understanding was still that the parking garage was not at full capacity, so that people could park at the garage. So, that, that is part of why we thought that we didn't want to wait till June 2016.
No, I understand that now. Tom, did you have something else?
Yeah, the parking, I think that we're talking about, this is mostly day students. This is not people who, who are residential, who live in the area and need a place to park their car.
Sure.
These are people who show up, go to classes, and then at the end of the day, they're gone. Parking really is not an issue in the evening because nobody's parking there. However, we recommended no parking at all primarily because of the access for emergency vehicles.
Sure. Thank you. Well, the neighbors have emailed and requested something different.
Yes.
I'm inclined to accommodate that somehow. I don't know the best way. So, I'm inclined to accommodate that because, you know, people who live there are saying, we still want to be able to park on the street.
Sure.
So, we need to somehow address that. Whether or not that's a, an allowance by permit or for limited hours, an allowance by permit in general, or an allowance by some other special exception, I don't know. I don't think we can figure that out right here at the table. So, if you want to take that back...
Sure.
And, and maybe it needs to go back to traffic and safety, because maybe the residents simply need to talk to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee to, to work out what the, you know, concerns and compromise or, you know, or maybe compromise is not the right approach because of safety, you know, emergency vehicles need to get through there. But I think a conversation with the Traffic, Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee and the residents would be advisable.
That sounds good.
And it may be once you talk to them, they realize, well, you're right. We, we do park on Clermont. We do have these other options, and we, we really don't need it. But the initial reaction is, no, don't take away my parking where my family park. So, maybe with some discussion, if we bring them into it, we can get some agreement.
Ms. Reed?
Yeah, I have one, one thing maybe Tom wanted to look at. I think that there's one major problem on Pinehurst, and that is the way that they developed the strip mall. The tractor trailer trucks have to back in right on Pinehurst, and I saw one nick the telephone pole the other day and drove on, drove up onto the curb and, in order to get his rig into that area. And not only that, it's a blind spot because of the fence that the, the guy has up on his property, and that's an accident looking for a place to happen.
Actually, I don't know the exact wording of the resolution, but I think you'll find that the resolution pretty much addresses from Loracrop to Camden. That area by Delaware Tire is already a mess.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of signs up. There's all kinds of restrictions. That is an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
That is not a traffic issue or a signage issue or an ordinance issue.
By, by code, we've done everything we can, is what we said.
Yeah.
We already did that, yeah.
I, I understand that they're a going business. I'm not trying to interfere with their business. And yes, there's a lot of truck traffic, and it's even been complicated with the construction that's been going on on 13, when the corner of Pinehurst and 13, on apparently no visible schedule, they just close it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that this go back to the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee for a meeting with residents before it comes back to work session.
Sure.
Council okay with that?
Yes.
All right, let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you, Amanda.